Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for May 21st, 2018, to order. Can I get you to be quiet in the back, please? Thank you. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience wishing to video or audio tape must notify the chairman now. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. I'm going to start this meeting tonight with a swearing in of our newly elected officials. Anita? Congratulations, Joan. Weekly briefing, anyone for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcement? So I have one. For anyone that read the Cape Cod Times today, Monomoy's principal, Bill Burkhead, won the State Principal of the Year Award. Quite an honor for Monomoy. And on a personal note, I've witnessed Bill, he's at everything involving the school, very, very open with the kids, and the kids absolutely love him. He deserves that award, and we should be proud as a community to have him there. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move the following consent agenda items. A, approved application for 2018 renewal of lodging house license for the Gray Gold. It's five units, rear building only. B, vote to sign proclamation for rededication of the square at Chase Street in Route 28. C, approve Chapter 90 request for chipped ceiling, various roads.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve, the consent agenda is read. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, it's probably worth all mentioning that the ceremony that we're referring to on the rededication will be on May 26th at 9:30 at the intersections of Chase Street and Route 28, for those who want to attend.
And I would ask, is there a board member that can be present? I will be away.
I'm going to try to be there.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Public hearings and presentations. Town of Harwich certification is National Wildlife Federation Community Wildlife Habitat. Is anyone here to speak on that?
Good evening. I apologize, I've got a little case of laryngitis, so I hope you can hear me. I'm Diane DeGennaro, and my partner, Joanne Doris, and I are co-chairs of the Conservation and Bird Subcommittee for the Garden Club of Harwich. And we have two other committee members, Kathleen Welch and Maura Costa are here as well. And we just wanted to share with you an exciting new initiative that we're taking on. We have signed on with the National Wildlife Federation as part of their Habitat Reclamation Project, which is a nationwide project. And our local project is going to be called Harwich Habits for Wildlife. And since our garden club, a piece of our mission statement is that we educate our community members on best practices, this, we feel, would be a wonderful vehicle to do that education component. Basically, the nuts and bolts of it are that each, we look to have each resident in town, or 175 residents in town, that could certify that they have the criteria in their residential yard to support wildlife habitats. And the criteria includes whether you have food for wildlife, water, a place for raising young, sustainability, and cover for young. And if you can certify within each of those criteria, usually two or three would be enough. So for example, if you were looking for criteria in your yard to support wildlife for food, if you had a bush that had berries that birds could eat, or you put out bird feeders or suet, or nectar from perennials, any of those would qualify. So there's a lot of leeway and flexibility in how to qualify your space. So for a very nominal fee of $20, a resident submits their application, and they're approved. And if Harwich can get 175 residents, then we would be the first town on the Cape to have the certification of a wildlife habitat town. And it would only be the second in Massachusetts. So we're very excited about this, and we thought we'd bring it to the Select Board and invite you to partner with us. And by partnering, all I mean is, we'll do the work, we'll do the legwork, but we would love it if you could give us your blessing and allow us to put the brochures in town offices, or talk publicly about the fact that the town supports our efforts. And besides just residential areas, we can certify other public spaces, like any of the cemeteries that meet the criteria, or any other of our public spaces, like Thompson's Field or Doane Park, if they meet the criteria. And we get more points for larger tracts. If we do partner with you, we will go out to other agencies and community groups and offer the same partnership, saying, "The town is partnering with us, and would you consider that as well?" We feel like if we had access to members of each of these community agencies, it would go very quickly. Our garden club already has 30 people signed up, and it's very easy to do. You can either do it online, or do it, you know, snail mail. Let's see, is there anything else I didn't? Is there anything else I've left out? Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, and I appreciate you making it through this. I felt the same way at town meeting. And I didn't have to say as much as you did, so thank you.
I used to teach, and this would happen once a year.
You powered through it, thank you. Questions from the board, Don?
Not so much a question, but I've got suet, I've got bird feeder, about six bird feeders, I've got nectar, I've got a bush with berries, we've got water. Sign me up.
So you, and that's what I was going to say, if there's anybody here tonight that knows they want to do this, I'll just, we'll just hand you out these from the National Wildlife Federation. It's really easy to meet their criteria because they give you so many options. And just the thought of asking residents to take a moment and consciously make those decisions under sustainability, they're asking us to look at, could you cut down on pesticide, or could you use organic products? Or just giving you options, but really giving you a chance to consciously make good decisions to be good stewards of the earth in Harwich. And the last piece of this is, if you are willing to partner with us, we'll get 10 extra points if you would be willing to write us a letter supporting our efforts.
Thank you.
I'd have to buy a bag of fertilizer, it's going to be the first one in 20 years, so it's a Cape Cod lawn, too.
We got a raise this year, so Don will give you 15. Ed?
You can leave an application here, too.
All right, great.
Julie?
Same, I'd love an application, and it's a great idea.
A hot diggity dog, all right, I'm going to give you guys some.
Larry?
Yeah, I think I have my bird feeder, water bath, and all this stuff out there. I wish I knew more about birds, because I see more variety of birds this year than I have in the past. And I seem like I'm throwing my bird feeder up every other day, I've never had that activity that much.
Go ahead. You've got to be up at the mic, sorry. Go right to the mic.
If you sign up, if you do the application, you get these wonderful magazines from this organization, and it has tons of information, very nuts and bolts, about birds and wildlife. You'll learn a lot.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. The residential portion of this seems like a no-brainer. The public land that you, schools, Doane Park, Thompson's Field, seem okay with me. And I guess this question would be related to, go to Amy. Who approves the piece of land? Because I haven't taken the time yet to read this organization's rules on once it becomes a habitat area, and want to make sure that there's nothing hidden in there that would prohibit people from hunting, say, in Bell's Neck, or another legal piece of land in Harwich. I want to make sure that we're not signing on to evict people that can rightfully use that land now. So what is the approval process, I guess? Either Chris or Amy, if you could answer, how we would have to get that approved, and who would come before us to get that approved? Or is this wide open, once we decide to do this?
Yeah, yeah. Amy Sowinski, Conservation Administrator for the town. If we decided to use a piece of land such as the Bell's Neck, which is immediate, what comes to my mind, lots of water, lots of different types of plant and animal species there, we would want to make sure with, before we included that, that it wasn't going to change the standing rules and regulations. And if it would have to, then if it would, it would, it's under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, so there would have to be, if we were to want to include that, which I think there's other areas in town that, if need be, we could use instead. But if it came down to that, it would have to be, you know, a process. I'm not exactly sure which, because I haven't read everything, but we wouldn't want to, you know, go and change longstanding rules, we could see if we could adapt to it.
I will also add that the rules are very general, because really, they're looking just to educate people. So there's nothing about hunting that would preclude anything like that.
Thank you. Chris had one.
Yeah, I just, I have a house in Sturbridge, and my wife talked me into signing up for this, and to make sure we avoided any kind of legal elements, you know, I did read through the material pretty carefully. And I think it's as long as you engage in these practices, you can put the sign up and say that you're doing this, but it's no encumbrance on the property or anything of that nature. Obviously, I did that as a homeowner, my wife and I, but I don't know for, on behalf of the Town of Harwich, we could certainly look at the material, but I would think if it's similar, that I don't see really an issue where it would prohibit anything, it's more that we're engaged in these affirmative practices.
Okay, thank you. Next question was, in your letter to us, it says, "The garden club committee will provide assistance."
Yes.
Assistance to who? This is going to really be you guys, right? I mean, or do we?
Correct.
Town employee?
You would just give us your blessing, and then we would probably ask to put brochures here, and we would do all the footwork, and we'd work with Amy if there were any moments of, you know, overlap that we could use as teachable moments in the community.
Okay, great.
And this is what it looks like that you get for your $20, that you can put in your yard. And just imagine tourists, or, you know, anybody coming into town, seeing a lot of these around, it speaks to what we value as a community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank the garden club, too, you guys do an amazing job in town, and we don't get to thank you enough, really.
You are most welcome, it's our pleasure.
Can I get a motion on this, to give them our blessing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Approve new application by the Commodore Inn for weekly entertainment from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Barbara Ann?
So first time saying hello in my new role, how are you all? We just wanted to let you know that it was not anything that you're going to need to worry about, I know the town's had a few little incidences. This is simply like guitar music with some drinks by our pool. That's pretty much all it is, but we're here if you had any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions, Don? Ed? Larry?
No.
Julie?
No.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve and seconded by Don, Ed made the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
Well, you could hang around for a while.
Cell Tower Revenue Affordable Housing Trust, Affordable Housing Fund Balance. Vote to fund new affordable housing trust. Chris?
Just on this, Mr. Chairman, I know the board had previously had, I don't know if it was an intent or a specific vote, that during the budget process, maybe even at the budget hearing, that you wanted to show real affirmative support for the housing trust, and that as soon as town meeting was done, and as soon as the trust was authorized by town meeting, you wanted to have a transfer of funds occur from the affordable housing balance, which is really money generated from the cell tower revenue. The information that I was provided shows that there's currently a balance after the obligations that we had already made, the board had already made, to Habitat, that there is a balance of $34,396. This would be added to the $500,000 that was authorized by town meeting for the activities of the trust. I would just say, as more information, I did have a fairly lengthy meeting today with the town attorney to go over all the, there's a lot of stuff that we accomplished at town meeting, and we did have a discussion on this. This is really just them reviewing the trust documents, and then we just file those at the Registry of Deeds, that the town is a trust community. So we will be preparing that, probably in a 30-day to 60-day timeline, and submit that. So I think the trust will be engaged fairly quickly, unless there's any element problems to the language that we've adopted from Yarmouth, but we should be going. They did make mention, and more for the board, that one thing, when they do form it, it has to have the list of officers, so it can't just say, you know, a representative of the board. So I would recommend fairly early in the process, so when they do the documents, that we can list the officers, that the three-at-large positions, obviously, I would volunteer as the administrator to be on there, I probably would not do my designee initially, and then a member of the board. But I think if we could schedule those to get started, that would definitely facilitate the organization of that.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So tonight's vote would be to move the $34,396 into the Affordable Housing Trust, or consideration of, I should say. And then, secondly, the cell tower money, future cell tower money, to go into the Affordable Housing Trust. Correct, Chris?
That's correct.
Okay, Don? Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Well, I think what Don is probably going to say is that we probably should have specific dollar amounts that go in to have the appropriation, so Department of Revenue discourages kind of a proactive look at sending money in before it's received. So I think that what we probably should do is maybe quarterly, or at the beginning of the year, and at the end of the year, put money in.
Okay.
So that way the trust knows how much it has to deal with.
Okay, Don?
Kind of what I said. Yeah, when we originally discussed this, we had set up the housing trust, I mean, we set up the fund from the cell tower, what, 2004?
I think it was.
At town meeting. The important part about that was that the money was authorized to go to the Board of Selectmen to use as they chose for affordable housing. Our discussion about this was that every time the coffers filled up, we could easily designate it to an entity that we felt confident was going to use it in exactly that purpose. The only thing I'm worried about right now is that there was no question where we're going to do that, and we're going to give the money, but there really isn't an entity yet, because it's not populated. So I'm not sure that we actually want to take a vote tonight, or that we reaffirm that that was always the intent, and as soon as we have an entity, that we're going to start pushing money into it.
Well, I think we could make the vote contingent upon when the entity is done. It doesn't need to be moved this week, but.
Yeah, one of the things, I got a little education today, going through a little bit deeper with the attorney, this is really just another subdivision of the town.
So we're just moving it from one account to another for accounting purposes, so Carol,
the Finance Director, would be dealing with all the transactions and oversight of those transactions, whether it's in the trust or within the town. So I think during the designation, she's just going to post it to that new account number.
Would it be appropriate then to say that we could make a motion to earmark such funds as will be available, what was it, September 30th, that they would be deposited in that account? If we wanted to do it quarterly?
Yeah, I, well, my suggestion would be to, we know we have the 34, and then maybe on September populate the money that comes in between now and then, and then it should be formed by then.
I'd be willing to move that we send the 34 from the cell tower fund designated to the new Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Once established.
At once established.
Right.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Don? Ed? Julie? Larry?
I do have one question, just for clarification. Was some of this cell tower money used to help fund the Child Center on 124?
I don't believe so.
I'm trying to remember, I seem to recall that we might have used.
Ed?
I just want to be sure that we're not, that we're covered there.
I won't.
At one point, the childcare vouchers that we received, and we jointly filed the application, and it was either denied, or the application date.
We missed the application date, so we used the cell tower.
We used.
Some of that time. I just want to be sure that that's, that is, that that's ended, you know, that we broke away from that.
We actually didn't use the money for the cell tower. What we did is, those parents that would have qualified for the vouchers, we used our cell tower funds, or our, there was a fund of money that we had designated under the control of the Housing Authority, not exactly sure which pot of money and how it moved, but what we did is, we paid, we, instead of them getting a voucher for childcare, they got a voucher from the Housing Authority to pay their housing costs. And they could use the funds that were freed up.
I understand that, so we indirectly covered it. I just wanted to be sure, you know, we found a way to indirectly do it. Maybe just clarify that.
Yeah, so I'll check on the entity, I mean, one of the things we had in there was what the money was expended this year, and there was no reference to the.
I'm sure we're okay, I just hate to cut off the.
What was the name of the agency again, Larry, just so I can?
Hesh.
Any further discussion?
Never heard us call it 124 down that.
All in favor? Aye? unanimous?
Yep.
Thank you. Recommendation for site plan review filing fee for Cape Cod Tech. Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I alluded to this at the last meeting, that we were looking at the process on Cape Cod Tech, and what we found is that, under the Dover Amendment, the Dover Amendment is part of state law, that when an educational institution, before a planning board, that there is a more simpler review that is completed. And this was the same rationale that was used, and I appreciate, before he was a Selectman, Mr. McMahon is kind of pointing that out, too, from Monomoy, we found that same reference. And what we did, what the town did in that circumstance, when Monomoy applied, it was recognized that there would be a lesser amount of effort for Planning Board to do the review, so the fee was capped at $4,000. I think it was $32,000 or $36,000 in total. I would recommend, after discussion with the planner, that the same be applied here, that we cap the fee at the $4,000. So it may come in at $34,000 or $38,000, but it'd be capped at $4,000. So the recommendation would be to approve the Planning Board Site Plan Approval Fee at $4,000, or the waiver, so the net fee is $4,000.
Discussion, Larry?
But you're saying our costs will be more like $34,000, but we're capping the fee?
No, the bill that we would send them is.
What's our internal cost?
$38,000, the internal cost would be the four, the $4,000.
That's our, that covers our effort.
Yes. Now, just, I want to be clear, because I don't want people to say that I'm inconsistent later on. When we get to the building permit fees, there will be the electrical inspector and the plumbing inspector, we have to pay them, and there is quite a bit of oversight. The building official, because it's controlled construction, that the engineer takes ownership, if they will, of the construction of the building, the building inspector's oversight of that would be somewhat diminished. So I will have a discussion with them about what their fee is, but we're here, it's almost an 80% reduction in fee, or 90% reduction in fee. It probably won't be as significant when we do the plumbing and the electrical in the building, but we'll keep it consistent with what we did with Monomoy.
What's that, Larry?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure I'm following it all, but, because you're capping the fee, but I'm still trying to figure out what our, what our costs will be internally.
Yeah, I think that the rationale, probably another way to visualize this, Larry, is that for the Planning Board, because they're doing a significantly scaled-down review of the plans, that staff believes they can do it within the $4,000. But when you put in the toilets, every toilet still needs to be inspected, every sink needs to be inspected, we're still going to be exerting resources of the organization to do that. So the fee decrease on, when they do that part of it, won't be as much, because the Dover Amendment doesn't apply when you're putting in a toilet or doing electrical fixtures.
Because I questioned this last, last meeting, my question, I certainly want to support Cape Cod Tech, but just to be clear, what we're doing is, we're not, this isn't a question about supporting Cape Cod Tech or not, this is gifting the other towns, and we're paying their proportion of the fees. And that's the part I was, I was concerned about.
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman, through you, I think that if there wasn't the Dover Amendment, if there wasn't a scaled-down site plan review, so instead of reviewing 100 points, we may only be reviewing 10, and I think that the rationale behind this is that because the review is less, the fee would be less.
Yeah.
So we're not necessarily subsidizing the other communities, we're doing a fee more consistent with the level of effort that we'd be engaged to do.
Julie?
No, and to be clear, I mean, this is simply planning site plan review, so to Chris's point, you know, we're not having to expend the same kind of resources we would normally, so I don't have a problem with it capped at $4,000.
Ed? Don? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the capped site plan review of Cape Cod Tech at a fee of $4,000.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Who seconded, I missed.
Don. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Selectmen's summer meeting schedule, you have that in your pocket? Questions on that, Larry? Questions or comments?
Well, the only comment is, it works for me, because I was going to have to miss the June 16th meeting for babysitting grandkids that weekend, so, although I might be better off here.
We were meeting on Saturday?
The schedule's good.
Julie?
So, no, I think it's fine, the only question I have is, when we miss on the, never mind, never mind, it makes sense to me. Yeah, no, I'm good.
Ed?
No, it looks fine.
Chris?
I didn't know if you wanted to just announce to the public the dates that you're considering.
I will, yeah. Don?
No, they look.
My only question is that meeting between June 18th, and then the next one being July 9th, that seems like an awful long time without a meeting.
And can I ask one other question?
Go ahead.
Are we meeting on, so Monday, the 3rd, in September, and then so, is a holiday, so do we meet, are we meeting on the 4th, after the long weekend? I thought we didn't do that last week.
No, we didn't.
We didn't.
Chris? No, we didn't.
Well, wait a minute, just, I want to, on June, the last meeting of the Selectmen in June, so the 25th, in July 9th.
Oh, it's the 25th, I'm sorry, I took the X.
But there is a.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah, so there's only a two-week hiatus.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I missed the, so the July 4th.
No, sorry, I, I, that's what I was originally thinking was on the July 4th. But no, I'm looking at the September, September 3rd, the holiday. And normally, if there's a holiday, we would meet on the following day.
We would meet on the Tuesday, the 4th, yeah.
So I thought we didn't do that last year. I thought we did not meet on the Tuesday after the.
I think that depending on how things shake out, if there's enough time.
Yeah.
Depends on where Labor Day falls.
Okay.
Chris, where's the resident, non-resident taxpayer meeting in this slot?
One of the open dates.
One of the open dates?
You could pick. I don't think we've established that. I think we've done August, I think it was August 6th or August 20th. I want to say we did it in August last year.
So that would have to be the, that would have to be a double meeting, most likely, or we're going to miss a whole week of regular business.
Right.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I might say that if it were deferred to the 20th, that that's pretty much the tail end of the summer for most non-residents. It would be better if it were the 6th, if maximum participation was our goal.
Right. Okay. So for the public, there'll be no selectmen's meetings, June 18th, July 2nd, July 16th, July 30th, August 13th, and August 27th. Can I get a motion on that from the board?
We approve the schedule as printed in the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next up, amend the personnel bylaw plan for FY19 in keeping with union increases. Chris?
Just in terms of this, one of the things, it's a practice, once town meeting approves the 2% for the budget, we usually do follow-up pretty quickly with a 2% for the salary administration plan. So that's what this does here. The one thing I would just note in reviewing the materials, I, I think that the board did vote, but we may want to do a confirmation vote on the library director. The library director is kind of an interesting one. They've regraded that position. And under the agreement that we had special legislation that gives the library trustee authority over their employees for their operation, I think we have that listed as an M4 on here, and I think that that would have to be adjusted, consistent with what they had on the budget. But I think Mr. Lawton had pointed out to me that I don't think the board has officially voted to, they voted the budget, you voted the budget, but to acknowledge that that change of the library director has been made. I just want to, and I don't remember the exact one, but if we do the 2% with that as an acknowledgement, we'll be back on the library director.
Okay. Discussion, Larry?
So, maybe I wasn't paying attention enough. Once, once you actually require it tonight, then we have to.
The non-union salary scale right now still has the FY19 number.
We just have to approve this amendment.
So this would be a 2% to allow for FY19 to go into effect.
Julie?
I have no questions.
Ed? Don, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve to amend the personnel bylaw plan for FY19 in keeping with the union increases, including the library, or should we?
I think that that position's going to change, because I think it's M4.
Okay.
And I think it went to an M6 or M7.
We should bring that back next.
If we bring just the library director back, but the schedule itself.
Okay, so in keeping with the union increases?
Did I get a second with that?
For, for non.
She said non, yeah, originally.
Non-union.
Yeah.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I'm going to invoke the Attorney General's 48-hour rule. Tonight in front of you, you have a, an application for a common, particular, particular license from Cape Side Kitchen, Inc. You know, I think somebody could argue that this is not an emergency. I would argue otherwise, as doing business right now is extremely important. The application has been through all the regulatory boards and has been approved. It was just not submitted to administration in time to get on this agenda, and the request is to be opened for the weekend. So my suggestion, unless Chris disagrees, would be for us to approve a temporary license for a week until we put this on the agenda for next meeting, which they will submit the application tomorrow, and it will be on Tuesday, next week's meeting.
If you allow me to use the real word.
Yeah, go ahead. You can use it in the motion. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
I just wanted to, we did get the material. I think in this case, the business owner came in, scrambled to try to get. He thought he had submitted it earlier, and he hadn't. So I think this really was just a simple oversight on his part. I, I think it makes sense. We obviously don't want to do too much. I think under the spirit of the law, if we're aware of something, we just do a temporary for one week, and then bring back the, the full consideration at the next meeting. I, I think that that kind of is a, not a bad meeting place in the middle to, to be pro-business friendly, and to help a, a business trying to get started up in Harwich.
Thank you, Chris. Ed?
Fine, you know, having, being able to get breakfast in Harwichport, it's really important.
Julie?
No problem.
Larry?
Go for it.
Don, can I get a motion?
Yeah, we're going to be meeting again on the 29th then?
On the 29th is the next meeting.
I, I move that we approve a temporary Wittler's license for Cape Side Kitchen Incorporated to extend through May 29th in our next meeting.
Yes.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have the form, so if you want to put there the date on it and then sign it, then we can have that be issued to him as a temporary one.
The date's the issuing date, though, isn't it?
It would be today through the 29th.
And then he'll get a new one for when we vote it.
And he'll get a new one.
Okay, old business. We're going to wait on A, because Carol Ridley is going to be a little late, or potentially could be late, not seeing her. She is late. So we're going to move on to the town administrator's performance evaluation. I'll open that with, all the material is in the packet. Chris did receive a passing grade. He is entitled to his 2%. As far as the detail goes, the detail is in the packet and in the drop box. I'll open it up for discussion if anyone wants to discuss it, starting with Chris. Anything?
Start with me. Obviously, you know, I have made my way through the material, had a chance to look at it, you know, a lot. I, I realize that there's a lot of different moving parts. I do my best I can. I recognize that I have, that I have flaws. I certainly try, and I think we had a, a good town meeting. I do appreciate, I think when I did the average, and again, depending upon, some people did creative scoring. So, you know, I did have it at about 64, 65 was the, was the grade, which is a passing grade. I just appreciative of the 2%, so I could be treated like all other important.
And I would just comment on the, the average, Chris, and just, you know, Janelle spoke last week, and I know she put additional information in the packet. Janelle had scored at a 45, and there was some form confusion. She did discuss changing that grade, but because you've got a passing grade, and she's not a sitting selectman, she can do it if you want her to do it, but I think she did a good explanation and put it into the packet, so.
Okay, I'm fine.
Don?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the only thing that I did was, absent a Ouija board, I gave him all nine points for the future goals and objectives, which are really ours to create, and it's hard to say that he didn't meet that, because we haven't established that. So the two, the two possibilities were to take it out, weight it differently, or just leave it in. And I gave him the nine points, but I think we need to consider not, not looking into the future next year, and just rating things on the basis of what actually happened.
Ed, unless you have something to say, I'm going to skip over you, because you weren't part of it. Julie?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I, you know, I voiced my confusion with it, and I know it's the same form, but I have trouble with it constantly, so I agree, it's hard to grade into the future. And I also think that, that just the way it's set up, it's, in some places, I think he loses points just, just by the way the form is set up. So I would say, you know, if we could tweak it to make it better, and probably more representative of the job, I guess, would be helpful next year. But thank you, Chris, for all your hard work.
Larry?
Yeah, I agree. I wouldn't tweak the nine points. I would cut it. It makes no sense to me whatsoever. But the review, I think we could tweak it a bit in terms of that better matches our objectives. I think Chris, I think my review did a good job. I, I felt there's communication areas that we could improve on. Stay that there, but as I said last, last time we talked, every performance review should list areas of them that we can work harder on, and that's what, what my, my intention was.
Thank you. I do remember two years ago, we had the same conversation, so if this doesn't get put on the agenda and dealt with, we'll be having it again next year at this time.
My, my further comment I may, Mr. Chair, is I, I do believe that it makes sense to have reviews more than once a year, even though they may not be as formal, because I always, my personal judgment, opinion is that if you have anything serious to say at the end of the year, you're not communicating throughout the year. That that communication should be going on, and so I would, I would suggest that we consider quarterly reviews, at least in, in some sense, so we're not, we're all, are going in the same direction.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, moving on. Ownership of the fields behind the cultural center.
Could we have a vote, so that I can have the authorization for the 2% for?
Oh, motion?
No offense.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the overall town administrator evaluation and award the 2% increase.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that, Chris.
4-0.
Yep. Ownership of the fields behind the cultural center. There's a map in the packet. Chris, thank you for getting that. Is this a starting point, or are we there?
Yeah, I think this is a starting point, with everything going on. And I certainly did have a conversation with the town surveyor. We did walk the site way back when, probably six months ago, and I think that there were some issues about the location, as to where the line should be. I did meet, he gave that initial draft. I think if the board was happy with that version, then I think probably makes sense to send a copy of that over to the school committee, or Monomoy Regional School Committee, and to Scott Carpenter, and get the discussion started, if there's any issues. I don't anticipate that there would be an issue with the map, but we probably should have at least a board vote that that does make sense. One of the things on the map that makes it a little bit challenging is we didn't address the line. We took the line where it kind of made sense for where the, the elementary school playground areas are, and then we have the other. They do have the, the joint use facility for the, the septic system, so that is kind of left out, so that continues to be a, a joint ownership. So the only thing that really this would address is specifically, which I think, Mr. Chairman, is what you're, where you're going, is the ball fields, and that if the Little League want to use the ball fields, this would have them come to us for a license agreement, as opposed to going to Monomoy.
And really, my intent is to tie it in with the cultural center and make it part of that property.
Yes.
Questions on this, Larry? Comments?
None.
Julie?
Just that, when we talked about the labyrinth, we had conversations about that. And then we talked about possibly putting it in the real, remember?
Janelle's recommendation, yes.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, like, if we did do something like that, would we be looking to put it over by where the wording here is, like exclusive use line? Would, would we go, would we be going that far back? It's just a comment, a question.
Yeah, I, I think it, it is funny that we don't want to create a lease line, or we don't want to create a property line. So that's where Paul came up with the excuse, exclusive use line, which I guess is more common terminology in condominium setups.
Yeah.
So I, I think that this, really, just anything, if you would, to the right of the diagram in the fields would be the selectmen's jurisdiction. So if the labyrinth was to be moved from the front grass area off to that side, that would fall within the, the selectmen's area.
And so the only comment I want to make about that is, and again, just in relation to this, is we talked about, you know, that being in partnership possibly with the school being able to use it. And I just want to say, as long as the school would be comfortable with that, because if it becomes something where the public is any time during the day going there, we want safety of the kids and all that to keep in mind. So I, I don't have a problem with the line as it is. I just think we need to think about that for the next conversation.
Yeah, and I think the labyrinth, they, they were going to look into and come back to us with a more formal proposal as well.
So I'm fine with that.
Ed, also? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Julie's point, I mean, given what the rules are for the playground, I can't imagine the, the use of the labyrinth, if that occurs, to be absent parental supervision. So it would make sense, you know, the way this is set up. I drove back there after she, Janelle had given us an idea of where she was thinking about putting it. It seems that it fits, you know, to the east of the, the line that's being drawn here, which makes sense.
Okay, so you'll all support Chris sending a letter to the school?
Yeah.
I'll take that as majority consensus.
Consensus.
Unanimous?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to go back to A, Pleasant Bay IMA, and welcome Carol Ridley.
Thank you very much, and good evening. So I'm here this evening to follow up on the two town meeting articles that were approved by Harwich Town Meeting. We thank the town voters and, and you for your support. So essentially, I have some documents here for your signature. These have, similar articles were on the warrants in the other member towns of the alliance, Orleans, Brewster, and Chatham, and all passed. So we already have signatures on these documents from two boards, Chatham and Brewster also meeting today. So, and, and we will have them signed by Orleans on, at their Wednesday meeting. So one of the documents is the memorandum of agreement that continues the alliance. That's the document that was paired with the approval of the Pleasant Bay Resource Management Plan update. I have a copy here for you. The other three documents are related to the Pleasant Bay watershed permit that we've been working on with Massachusetts DEP, US EPA, and the Cape Cod Commission. Mr. Ballantyne has been an active part of our discussions, and Mr. Clark, along with Hines, Proft, and folks from the other member towns. So we have an intermunicipal agreement among the four member towns to, to seek the permit. And, and their technology. Then, so there's the intermunicipal agreement to seek the watershed permit from Massachusetts DEP, and two letters. One is a letter to the Cape Cod Commission that would allow us to submit this document, which is the Pleasant Bay Targeted Watershed Management Plan, for a determination of 208 consistency. So this is a very core part of the watershed permit. It essentially is the four, it's the combining of the four town plans for Pleasant Bay. So one letter is the 208 consistency request, and the other letter is the actual application letter that we will send into Massachusetts DEP. So the sequence of this will be, we will seek the determination from the commission. We need to get a letter back from them. That letter is added to the targeted watershed management plan, the IMA that you're about to sign, and a few other documents and a copy of that plan. And that's going to be submitted to Massachusetts DEP with the application letter that you'll sign this evening. So we intend to submit the package to the commission by this week or early next week. And we intend to submit the application to Massachusetts DEP the first couple of days of June. We hope to hear back from them by the end of the fiscal year. And it is our plan, once we hear what we anticipate good news on the permit, that we would have some sort of a gathering of the four town boards of selectmen and officials, commissioners, and, and high-level officials from, from Massachusetts DEP and EPA, who are very interested in this, the Cape Cod Commission as well, and our state and federal elected officials to kind of kick off the watershed permit. I believe it's the first in Massachusetts, and possibly the first in New England for a watershed permit. And again, the purpose of this is to, it, it gives added points for eligibility for low-interest and no-interest revolving loan funds. It provides opportunities for nitrogen trading that can be a credit to Harwich, should you choose to pursue that with, with other towns, and for non-traditional technologies, for getting nitrogen removal credit for non-traditional technologies. So I also want to mention that we have, we have been asked to, by Massachusetts, no, excuse me, EPA, to submit a proposal under the Southern New England Estuaries Project for funding to implement the watershed permit. So we will be submitting a grant for funds that will help us implement aspects of this targeted watershed management plan, so new funds that were not previously available, should we be successful with our grant proposal, so.
Thank you, Carol.
So if I, would it be possible to get these signatures now?
Yes, let me, yeah, let's just see if the board has any questions.
Oh, certainly, of course.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to revisit the fertilizer part of this. Is, we're heading towards education as opposed to regulation, or?
Right, so Harwich actually is the only town in the Pleasant Bay watershed that didn't actually adopt a regulation change or a bylaw. a regulation change or a bylaw regarding fertilizer control. I think the Board of Health opted to take more of a public education approach. But all four towns incorporate some degree of fertilizer reduction as part of their, residential fertilizer reduction as part of their nutrient reduction program. So that's almost factored in to the plan. It's not one of the methods, except for Brewster, which is doing it at a higher, you know, a grander scale, if you will, at the public golf courses. But for residential fertilizer reduction, that nitrogen reduction has been assumed in the planned calculations for nitrogen removal. But that's not to say that Harwich couldn't adopt a regulation in the future going forward, but the town hasn't chosen to do that at this time.
The reason I brought that up is I just didn't want to inferentially obligate the Board of Health through our action tonight into something that they hadn't previously adopted.
It wouldn't, no.
We've had some success in like Great Sands, some other areas, and education projects that have resulted in substantial reductions in nitrogen without mandating them.
Correct.
Go ahead.
I do think Carol did a great job of kind of summarizing. And I think that internally, there was a decision made to kind of emphasize education and to rely upon the state law to do it. I think after kind of attending, Larry goes to the same meetings, that it probably does make sense to approach the Board of Health and try to do something more formally. So that way, as the DEP counts nitrogen credits for reduction, we can have that on the books. So I do believe that there would be an incentive, but I appreciate that the group did recognize that Harwich took a little different path as we headed down this. But I think at least from administration standpoint, I'd like to have something that we would present, potentially in the form of a bylaw or as a Board of Health regulation, whichever it takes, and see if we can get them to pursue that so we can formally get the credits related to the nitrogen reductions.
As long as our action tonight isn't requiring them to do that.
No, it's not.
That's good.
Ed? Julie?
I just have a question in general in terms of the other towns having the bylaw and understanding, of course, of watershed and the leaching. But in terms of, let's just say, the bay and Wauquasit and Eastward Ho and all that, is there any kind of check that goes on about using that kind of, you know, fertilizer? So I'm just wondering, how did you go about monitoring that?
Well, that's one of the tricky aspects of this. It's really difficult to monitor. A few years ago, we did approach the four golf courses in the watershed. Not Wauquasit, but the Cape Cod National, Eastward Ho, the Lynx, Chatham Lynx, a portion of which is in the watershed, and Captains. And we asked them, and they were very cooperative in each case. They provided us pretty detailed records for the amount of fertilizer that they applied to each different type of turf. So the rough and the fairways and the greens all get different treatment. And what we found is that the application rates that they reported at that time, and I think this is maybe 2007 or '08, it was several years after the MEP, the Massachusetts Estuary Project, had initially gathered data on their applications. And we found that they had actually already voluntarily reduced the amount of nitrogen they were applying. And in fact, Brewster is using some of that reduction as part of their response to their requirement for nitrogen removal. So, but that was all very voluntary and, you know, we haven't been back to them more recently, but we did find that out.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Larry?
And of our golf courses in Harwich are typical, we had them in, I think, probably that timeframe, they'd reduce their fertilizers, I think, by around 60%. You know, for that reason, but also economics.
Yeah.
Right.
Save money and better, better control of what they're doing. So I agree with Carol, they can probably do more. But as Chris says, we've talked about early on about, and the question is on fertilizers, you know, who enforces it? And towns have taken different tracks. The Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and the Board of State. I just want to briefly comment and give credit to Carol. This turns out to be really a complicated process. Anytime you have four, I'm amazed by the number of regulatory agencies involved with this, trying to communicate between DEP, EPA, conservation, and then the towns themselves. And just remind people that this is an adventure, because I think, Carol, you said, this is the first, certainly in the state and maybe in the nation, to get a watershed permit. We all think about discharge permits, but they're for factories where you have a single pollutant going in, not for a watershed. So getting this into place. And just one further comment, we talked at town meeting about the 208 and our CWMP and the whole process. Part of the approval of 208 is contingent on us doing this. We weren't doing it for our health. It was part of that promise we made with the legislature that we would follow through and do the larger permits. This gets us there and also gets us to a place where we're not only saying we're working with our neighbors, we're actually agreeing to, that we're going to work together and take our specific share of the nation to improve Pleasant Bay. So it has some meat behind it as well. So it's a good step forward. Now we have to get the grants so we can do all the monitoring.
Right, exactly, exactly. And hopefully, and I know you're working very hard on other watersheds in town and working closely with the town of Dennis. And hopefully, some of what we're doing and some of what we're learning with the piloting of nutrient trading, for example, and other measures will be of use as the town moves forward in those other areas.
Thank you, Carol. You've done a tremendous amount of work, really kept us informed in this. I did read that document twice. Quite a document, so thank you.
Thank you so much. We have a really great team. Wright Pierce was a really helpful technical consultant. Hines has been great. We appreciate, you know, Larry and Chris's involvement as well. So it's been a lot of people working together, including the folks at DEP and the commission and EPA. I did leave a copy for you, or copies of the targeted watershed management plan, so you can all take a copy and read through it. And there's also a copy of the updated management plan for the whole Pleasant Bay area.
For one for each one?
There's one targeted watershed management plan for each, and there's only one copy of the management plan itself. But I can provide additional copies if you would like.
Carol, can that be emailed to us? Is it in a document that's sendable?
Yes, in fact, I think it was in your packet.
Okay.
Or links to it perhaps, I don't know if you, right, okay.
Do board members want it, or do you want us to just have it as a reference document in the office?
I just need a reference.
I can read it. I hate to have them just sit on the shelf.
Yeah, no, I agree. That's fine. And I think that is, that is a good suggestion. We'll bring copies to the public library.
All set, Caroline?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the board's support throughout all of this. Thank you so much.
All set? All right, moving on, CDM brochure cost. Chris, I asked for this. Thank you for getting it for me. The reason I asked for this is because this was a, through the process, in my mind, it was one of those things that waited till the last minute. And I was involved in some of the communication. But in getting this bill, I just would ask that we look at this process from now on. But $2,000 for time to update the brochures, when most of it was cutting and pasting. I know in a 240 million dollar project, that's probably not a lot of money. But when we're asking our residents to scrape, to pay for this, I think we should really start looking at what we're spending this money on. And I don't get the sense that CDM Smith is a PR firm. And I think that as we move forward on this project, we really should look at getting one. And I don't, our committee did a lot of this work and we were billed 2,000 plus. I'm not that concerned with the printing costs, but I don't see that. And I think as we move forward, again, we waited till the last minute to get this done. And I would like to at least explore, have the conversation that we're not paying $2,000 in labor to recreate a brochure we already had. Any comments from the board, Larry?
No, I agree with that. I think the issue on this, however, was, in terms of the last minute, was I think, and I'll put words in the committee's mouth, but in some ways, the committee felt that they weren't brought into the discussion until the discussion was basically over. You know, whereas the brochure was brought to them as a done deal, and then they had questions and had to go back to it. And so whoever used for PR, I certainly want to be sure that the support committee is involved in it from the beginning to the end. So they're part of the process and not brought to the end in this mad rush. So there's a bit of a process here too that we need to be sure we're paying attention to.
Julie?
No, I agree. I mean, we're paying a lot of money and we had a lot of discussion about the brochure. So I think any way we can look at getting that done more efficiently in the future is smart to do.
Ed? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to the chair's point, it looked real similar to the prior one. It wasn't a lot of extra work. A lot of the stuff is more than just symbolic. $2,000 is a lot of money if it was one person that was looking at that. So I mean, if we're going to try to make the point that we're trying to be as frugal as possible, then we should be doing it everywhere.
Thank you. All set? Chamber of Commerce proposal for additional parking in Harwich Port. There's a couple of letters in the packet. Chris, do you want to open this?
As I say, this is under town administrator report, not new business. But just in terms of this.
It's my last night, I want to get as much time as I can.
In terms of this, I did have the chamber approach me. There is a piece of property that is town owned as part of the schoolhouse parking lot. So it, I recognize that because of some construction in Harwich Port, that we are, spaces are at a premium. So we have, actually, I did meet with Bill today to kind of talk about. We have made efforts to improve the parking over the last couple of years. As the board may remember, we spent about $30,000 to add into the parking lot and connect into the TD Bank. Dave Spitz, the former town planner, I think, did an outstanding job to get a license agreement for them to allow us to do additional parking. And then this past year, when we were doing the line striping, the line striping contractor was given carte blanche to see how do we get the most number of spaces in there. I think at a minimum, I think it was about 17 spaces that were added. So I know that parking is of concern. When the request came in last week, I have had Charlene, the town planner, look at it. Apparently, when the site plan was done for approval of the schoolhouse parking lot, there was a commitment to keep a tree area. She has, and I think this is a good idea, come back with a suggestion that maybe we revise that tree area to see if we can sneak in some additional parking. So at tomorrow's Department Heads meeting, I will see if we can explore the timeline, if we can do that. And also find out from Link Hooper. I think Link's going to be kind of done with me coming to him for different requests. But to go to Link and ask him if we can take down some of those trees, once the planning board kind of gives us the green light, and see if we can do some roughed out parking for this year. If at all possible, we will attempt to get it done for the summer season. But with 70 degree weather today, we'll do the best we can to kind of get something done.
Thank you, Chris. And in the material, thank the Chamber of Commerce for bringing it forward. I did get several phone calls from business owners down there that are concerned. It's not necessarily just related, in my mind, to the construction. We are doing a great business in Harwich Port. There's a lot of people, and I think any parking spot we could get would be very helpful. Chris, I think there was a plan done to line the center of that parking lot, at least in a section of it a while back?
Yes, there was.
Is that going to be, can we look at that again?
That's what's already been implemented.
Okay, that's.
So there was a study that was done and it just wasn't implemented, so we implemented it this year.
I think they're utilizing it anyway, but without the scrims.
Yeah, it was implemented.
Anything further on this? All set? Go ahead, Chris.
And then just a couple of other, just on town meeting and the election results. Really, I just, there's a lot that we had done. I was surprised today when I met with the town attorney that there was like 20 different follow-up items just with the attorney. So we are working on putting together some timelines for some of those elements. So I'll kind of report back as I can get my arms around all the work that needs to be done and the assignment of that work. So we'll have that tomorrow at Department Heads to start talking about who's going to do what pieces. It will be delegated as much as possible to Department Heads. Just a couple other items that I wanted to make sure I had the opportunity. There was some question about the process that we used for the development of the pet burial ground. I did think it made some sense to have Bob Lawton, while he's here, take a look at that process and see if we can strengthen that. So I have authorized Bob to look at that and come back with recommendations. So he is engaged in that and whatever report he produces or write-up, I'm more than happy to share with the board. The next one, I'm a little bit concerned, and I certainly put this on the board to see what direction you want to do, on the Big Fix. We have the Big Fix. We had kind of authorized, and I know that we wanted to make sure we have a good showing. There hasn't been a tremendous amount of requests. And the deadline for the requests are June 1st. And the board, there's really two things. One, I have him coming in, the gentleman from Big Fix, to talk to Department Heads. So I will energize on a department level if there's people, and I'm kind of doing this publicly too. So if there are people in the community that have their houses in need of repair or their yard has gotten a little bit past them and they don't have the financial means to be able to keep up with that. I think it's specifically geared towards veterans as well, that if there's people that have an interest, please get ahold of Judy Wilson at Council on Aging, so she could kind of be the repository for that, for the town side. The board did kind of officially or unofficially vote to have, you know, Janelle be the point person.
I'm good with that.
Well.
Just kidding.
Yeah.
She's not here anymore.
You may get the results that, it just puts me in a funny spot. I guess I'm just, we don't have, we don't have a lot of applications and we need to try to find a way to increase those applications. So however the board thinks, you know, it makes sense that we can get an increased number, you know, I just want to make at least a plea. We are coming up pretty quickly on June 1st, so it's really a week away, a week and a half away.
I recognize Cindy Williams on this. I know it's the town administrator's report, but she's done a fair amount of work on this herself, so.
Thank you. Again, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. We've been working, I've been working closely with Anne Fleck from Housing Assistance Corporation. And we are all aware that we only have three applicants. As I mentioned last week in public announcements that I have offered my office, if anyone does want to fill out the application, is having a challenge, to please contact me, that I would help them fill those out. Also, I have spoken with Bill Galvin, and we have an article going in the paper this week as well. So we are reaching out as much as we can to the public, and again, reaching out tonight too. So everyone that's sitting at home watching, if you do, are a senior, disabled or veteran and have a need or you would like to have, to speak to someone, please, you can call me at the office. The office phone number is 508-430-1165, and I'd be more than happy to speak with anyone. You know, we always want to be better than everyone else, the town's ahead of us and stuff. But we really do want to help anyone that does need this, so please, reach out to me, day, night, whatever. We do have three. As Chris mentioned, it is until June 1st, so we've got this week and next week. I am around this week. We open the chamber for the season on the weekends, so please, we'll help you out.
Thank you, Cindy. Go ahead, Chris.
Just two other things on the.
If I may, let me continue this discussion a bit. Maybe we should reach out again to Judy Wilson and Will Remyard from the veterans and see if they can, you know, make some phone calls and do what we can.
They'll be at the Department Heads meeting.
They'll be at Department Heads. Judy and I have already had a discussion.
I know you mentioned Judy.
She's been giving all my blessings to.
And maybe Will as well for the veterans.
Yeah, we will get Will.
And I'm thinking, is there anything we can do on Channel 18? I don't know, is there a trades association that I help?
There really isn't.
There really isn't.
Yeah, we have it on there, I'm getting some.
Specific to Harwich, but. The one group though that should probably be talked to is the Board of Assessors.
Yeah, Board of Assessors would be good.
Because they have probably the best understanding and feel for those in town who own property and are in need.
Yes. Okay. Just two last things. On the Congregational Church, I was asked to follow up on the, if the plan needs to be, the, the burial plan, if that needs to be stamped plan. I was advised by the attorney today that on the agreement with the Congregational Church, really the only thing that's filed at the Registry of Deeds is the judge's opinion, the judge, I'm sorry, the judge's decision is on file at the Registry of Deeds. This agreement is just a contract between us and the church that they agree to that element of the overall judge's thing, judge's decision. So we, we do not need to have that plan be, be stamped, but it is, it was signed by the board, and we have that off for the other side to sign. And then I just want to kind of publicly thank Julie for her assistance in, we did do interviews for the assistant. I won't officially announce the name tonight, but it will be in the packet for Thursday. But I thought the process went, went very well. I, I know when 52 people apply for one position, there's a lot of people that don't get what they would like. And there were certainly a lot of people that brought different elements of the skill set. I believe that the candidate that we are selecting and, and putting forth to the board, so as my appointment, looking for confirmation at the 29th, is probably one of the most well-rounded candidates that we've received. And I think a candidate that, based upon the current longevity in position, could be a very viable succession person to myself. I wish I could say I was young, but I'm not so young anymore. I've been doing this for a while, and it would be nice to at least have a, a, a good quality candidate that would be able to be for a longer duration of what I'm currently looking at in terms of retirement. And just so I make that, it's not, I don't want to say my age, but, you know, I, I intend on being around probably 10 to 15 more years, so I do intend on being here for a, as long as you'll have me. But I do intend on being here for a while, but certainly, my career, if one has a 30-year career or a 40-year career, you know, I'm on the back nine, I guess, with that.
You're going far enough, Chris. Stop already.
Yeah, I, I, I'm digging my grave, aren't I? Anyway, that, that concludes my comments this evening.
Selectmen's report, Larry?
Uh, none.
Julie?
None.
Ed?
Nope, not yet.
Don?
I made it here.
Yeah, congratulations.
So I just want to, actually, I want to welcome Ed to the board and congratulate him on his, on the race and the victory. And thank the other two candidates for stepping up and running and, and did an excellent job. And then lastly, I just wanted to again thank Bill Burkhead and recognize Monomoy Principal of the Year. It's a, it's a huge achievement for our community and our schools, so. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.